I will call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I'd ask at this time, I'd like to welcome people to say the pledge allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we are at the point for the reorganization of the school board. At this time, I would entertain motions for the chair of the school board.
I'll make a motion to nominate Glenn.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we take a vote on Glenn as the -- Diana as the chair of the Ashland School Board. Wonderful. Thank you, and I'm very happy to pass it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, I need a nomination for Vice Chair. I'd nominate Renee.
One second.
Any other nominations? If not, all in favor? Four zero, thank you. And Secretary? I'd nominate Deb.
Yeah, second.
Any other nominations for Secretary? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Member present right now, Sandra Coleman, is not here, and I don't have any communications at this point. I checked my email just to make sure. Community assignments, Policy Review Committee, we need two people for the Policy Review Committee.
I want to nominate Deb and Steve.
Deb and Steve?
Yeah.
Okay with that?
I just want to make sure, I heard Deb and Steve.
Now, according to -- is this the right policy here? It says Chair shall approve. I thought we already voted on that.
It was kind of consensus, and if we couldn't get a consensus, we vote.
Since we have consensus, you guys are -- congratulations. Budget Committee, we need one and an alternate.
I see Sandra's not here, I think we should nominate her.
Yeah, I know Sandra likes to do it.
She does. She's on the --
No.
No.
She's on the --
She's old as a --
From our representative.
Sure.
Here she is. Here she is. Who are you to say?
I know, right? Everybody vote.
You're on every committee.
I'm on what?
We'll have her list for you.
We just nominated you for budget.
Okay. All right. I apologize.
That's okay. And do we have somebody that wants to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Yeah? Everybody okay with that?
It doesn't sound good.
Okay, so Sandra will be our committee, and Deb will be the alternate. The New Hampshire School Board Association delegate, usually we pick the newest member. Steve, would you like to do that?
Bringing it here, too. You know, I have no clue what I'd be asked to do.
Basically, one meeting.
One meeting? For a month?
No.
No, no. Like on the annual meeting.
It's an annual meeting for all the delegates. They get together and they do seminars and classes. It's only one meeting for the year, if you wanted to go down and represent Ashland.
Sure.
And then they do send those bulletins, you know, just to be aware of them.
Yeah, you'll start to get those emails, as well as Marilyn forwards them to you about training that's available. And that training's for anybody on the board, if anybody wants to go. Wellness Committee?
Sandra.
You want to be on the Wellness Committee again?
Sure.
Being late, I don't disagree, no.
Sandra will be on that. Building Committee? If everybody's okay, I'd like to stay on that.
Yeah. Is that mixed with safety, Steve?
No, I was going to see if Steve wanted to do Safety Committee.
I am on already as the Fire Chief.
Okay.
And, you know.
You can be the school board rep, too.
You can be the school board rep.
It's a dual role.
Yeah.
Got to be there, anyway.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, I think that fills out everybody on the committee. Minutes, regular meeting on March 6, 2018. Does anybody have anything on the minutes? The only thing I had was on Sandra's absent that night. It was with notice, she did. Text me. I didn't see it till later because I had my phone turned off. Did anybody see any corrections? And then I'll take a motion to approve it. Yep. Second. Nothing else? All in favor? Four. You abstaining? Four zero one. Sandra abstaining. Privilege of the floor, any agenda items? Any thought from the audience who'd like to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Communications? Do we have any communications? Administrative report? Principals' enrollment report?
So you have in your packet the enrollment report as of March 20. I'm sorry to say that since then, we have had seven students leave. So we are now down to 147.
May I ask, did they leave town?
Yes.
Or is it?
Oh, okay.
I didn't know whether they would be in place to me, or I went to a private school, or, you know.
Nope.
No.
Relocated.
You can't let any more seventh graders go.
I know. I know. Nine, we're down to nine. It's the smallest class. Sure. Yep. Yeah. It was a hard month, we just lost three kids. My principal's report of -- we have a lot of great things coming up, I'm just going to highlight a few of them for you. This Friday, we have our Cliff Book giveaway in the Media Center, because it is the first Friday of the month. Also, a reminder that we have the Director of Student Services Meet and Greet that we are having on Thursday from 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock. The two candidates will be here, and then we'll be meeting with community members and staff in Interlake Schools at 4:15.
5 o'clock, I believe. Marilyn, I'm looking at you. Brush my memory. Interlakes is at 5:30.
5:30.
So people have two choices, from 3 o'clock to 4:15 here, and then 5:30 to 6:45 at Interlakes.
Yep. So if you have some time, come on over and meet the candidates. We have -- staff will be there, and we've invited some parents, and give you just a chance to get to meet the two candidates and see what you think. So that is on Thursday. We have the Penny Sale this weekend, big event on Saturday. We hope to see you all there, it's from 5 to 8, it's for a great cause. Also, Mrs. Avery's class is doing their American Revolution Walk of Fame, which they do every year, and it's been an awesome event. So if you would like to come and talk to some former, you know, Revolutionary War leaders, please come, and you get to interview them and everything in the cafeteria, and the kids are all play that role really well, their roles, it's really a fantastic event. That is happening on the 11th. We have Community Service Day. New Hampton students are coming again, and they're going to work with some kids and do some fun activities and help out in the classrooms. We try to get -- we do a couple different things with them over the course of the year, and we've sent students to New Hampton, while we've done Project Week activities, and have had some really great experiences. So we like to be able to help them out, and it's great for our kids to have some older kids around and to be involved in some of those activities with them. NGHS induction ceremony is the 12th at 6 o'clock. That is always a really lovely evening. Eighth grade is having a car wash coming up at the fire station on the 14th. Mr. Heath, are you going to be there? Chief?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Again, Squam Lake Science Center is coming to visit. We have -- and learning summaries are going home on the 4th of May, because our term closes the week before, or the Friday before vacation, before spring break. Updates and reminders, I just wanted to make a brief comment about, we've done two really fantastic kind of events over the last week and a half. We took a group of kids and parents to Harlem Globetrotters on Friday night, which was an awesome night, and the kids all got their picture taken on the court, and the Globetrotters came out and had their picture taken with us, which was unexpected and a little, I think, intimidating, but exciting for the kids. So we had about 50 Ashland people, parents and kids, go to that. So that was an awesome night. And this morning, we had Recycle Percussion come and do their Chaos and Kindness Assembly. We had -- we hosted Holderness Central School, and they were here for, it was supposed to be about 45 minutes, it ended up being more than an hour. It was a fantastic assembly, and it ended with a dance-off with all the male teachers from both Holderness and Ashland. So, Mr. Heath, you missed that. So, Mr. March was there, though he did a fantastic job representing us, and the kids just had such -- it was such a great and positive experience. We recognized three students at the end of that assembly, Morgan Song, Brianna Fogg, and Madison Jolyn, all for various reasons, their perseverance, their creativity that they have made as students. And they got to go in with their parents and spend some time with Recycle Percussion and have pictures taken with them, and they were just so excited. It was awesome. So that was a -- we had a fantastic day today doing that. Staff of the Month, Katie Chamberlain, Lynn O'Brien, and Zach Morris, not just for his dancing ability. You know the teachers we have here, you know how hard they work. They don't ask for much, and they work themselves to the bone to make great things happen for kids, and these are three great examples. Can't get better than the staff that we have here, and that is the truth. So I'm happy to honor them and to thank them and appreciate them for their work here at Ashland Elementary School. We are -- we have two search committees in process right now. We have 18 applications so far, and still some coming in for the primary positions. So we're in the process of going through those and deciding who we're going to interview. We've had eight math applicants, and we've interviewed two today, we have two more to interview tomorrow. And we are preparing continuously for using the tools that are inside the TID State Assessment Testing System to work on modules that are kind of helping teachers target specific skills and things that we need to make sure, and actually just taking that test, the new test itself, because it's really a different, very, very different test for the kids. And we actually had a trainer come and work during the PD Day with teachers about how to use that data, how to use the system really well, and how to use the data to inform instruction, you know, instantaneously, right away. So that's been really helpful. And that's it? I know that's a lot of information.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Financial Report, Port.
Thank you. One thing that was not in your agenda that came out after, that I wanted to update the board on, is the health trust rates, with the actual rates that we've received. We had a guaranteed maximum of minus 2%. Our actual rate came in at minus 2.9%, or 0.9% decrease, or increase in the decrease. I estimate that at this point, given, based on current subscriptions and plans, it will save us about $5,007. So I wanted to start with that. In your packet, you have a general fund expenditure report. We have expended or encumbered an additional $28,419 since your last report. The largest change was in special education tuition to other LAAs. Revenues have increased by $2,493 due to Medicaid reimbursements. In fuel oil, we have used about 16% more gallons than this time last year, and so we're hoping that our days will start getting warmer. Food service, we are on track to break even. And I have the MS-22s for your signatures tonight, that is the report of appropriations as voted. Budget did pass, and we have those reports for your signature.
Thank you. Facilities update?
The Facilities Committee met on March 22. Mr. Wald is working with Mr. Parkett to write the specs for the roof proposal for the summer, the movement of the freezer vent to the roof and the kitchen exhaust. We also spent some time discussing updating the camera system, as well as safety and security film for windows. And we will meet again in the end of May, and we will come back with a recommendation.
Food Services, RFP?
I just wanted to let the board know that the district is required to go out for proposals for our food service management company every five years. So I have submitted a draft proposal to the Department of Ed, they have to review it, and they will get back to me with comments and corrections, if need be. And then I will set a date for a pre-conference and a due date, and the state also mandates who we send proposals to.
So they have pre-chosen vendors that we have to send?
Correct.
Do you know how many vendors?
There are five.
Five. Are they serving?
They serve New England, New Hampshire. They're the vendors that we went out to originally with the original proposals, the same ones.
So they have some history in the area with other schools?
Correct. Yep.
I don't know if they're just all Southern New Hampshire and don't have any experience up here.
No, no. At least three of them that I know of have area -- local schools in the area.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Hiring update, Mary?
Yes. I'd like to share with you an update. I know that Dr. Bartlett just shared about some of the positions, but just to get a little more information, as Dr. Bartlett said, primary tier, we've had 20 applicants to date. Mathematics, eight applicants. School nurse, we've had five applicants, and as you know, that's -- we're in conversation with looking at potentially contracting with Spear. But we have had five people express interest. We do have information from Spear about the hourly rate.
Excuse me.
Oops, sorry. And a surcharge that would come with that, if the board was to decide to hire a school nurse as part of the teaching contract. Spear would continue to welcome that individual to monthly meetings, and I believe that our current nurse does attend those meetings, and that is something that seems to be in place. So they're more than receptive to continuing that, even if we don't contract. So I think, I know that Shannon and her team have been quite busy trying to, with the mathematics in the primary tier, but probably the next thing would be to at least enter, you know, go through the applications and see if there is a worthy candidate within that pool. And then I think it's a question of, you know, which direction to go in. But that, we are pleased that we've had a response of five to date, which I'm surprised by. Honestly.
That's much better than what we --
Anticipated, so. Hard to replace.
We met last week, you said we only had one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're rolling in.
Yes, so they are starting to roll in a little there, so. But that's just to give you an update as to where things are.
Thank you. Voting results for the MS?
Yes, so we are very pleased that all of the warrant articles passed, and very grateful and thankful to the community of Ashland for supporting our school and for supporting the teachers who do an amazing job in this, in the school and within the community, and so just wanted to at least bring that forward, that relative to facilities and special education as well. So very appreciative of that.
Support very strongly, too, so that was very nice to see. Any memory and understanding, we have anything back yet?
So they, it's still in process at, with the SAU 48, which I believe meets in May, and then the Penny Baker Board. But we had, we did successfully break it apart into the two kind of responsibilities, and so it's still in motion. I don't believe there'll be any substantive changes, but it's just, that was one of the pieces they had asked for, we were able to accomplish that. And again, my goal is to keep it on the agenda until we have closure, so that we don't lose sight of that.
And for right now, we don't have, we won't have any committee members for that, for that memorandum and understanding, because Mary's feeling is it'll come back, not substantially change, and we won't have to do anything with it. Should it come back, then we would then have to probably put our committee back together and see how it affects us.
And to date, I've heard nothing that would indicate substantive changes. It was really more just Penny Baker wanted the SAU to have their portion.
So Renee and I met with Mary to set up the agenda, we didn't put those on committee because Mary thought that we didn't need to. Thank you, Mary. This is for the board, the Ashland School Board meeting schedule is in your packet.
And we do have a little update, apparently we left off October. You do not get a break? You thought that? We apologize, so this includes October. And we did successfully add a July meeting, which was part of our conversation. We did go with July 10, because the 3rd is the first Tuesday of the month, and I thought that might be a little challenging if the board needed to meet with the 4th of July. So that is an updated schedule.
We just put the July in there just in case. Usually we cancel it, but I'd rather have it in the schedule and cancel it, than have to throw in one because roof issue or, you know. But at least it's in the schedule for us, and everybody can see what our schedule is.
There are some other updates in here as well, we can refer to later.
Motion will prove it? We want a motion.
You want? Yeah.
It's in here, but I don't know if you can do it.
Yeah, probably should.
I'll make the motion after the School Board meeting schedule for 18, 19.
Your second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Five zero. Thank you. B is you have a memo in your packet for the week of May 7, 2018, this teacher and staff appreciation march, a week, and we want to do something, so we'd like to discuss as a board what we'd like to do, and maybe get Shannon's input.
I'm going to suggest that our staff block their ears.
Even though it's on TV.
Hit mute when that comes on.
I just don't, I think last time we kind of ran into some scheduling issues, because we got some stuff here. I know we tried to get things here by certain times, but we got it here at the wrong time because the staff might have already eaten, or we got here too late, or breakfast was too late coming. So I want to make sure that the times that we get things here are well coordinated.
I think it was probably middle school lunches at 11:05, and so I think, maybe, was it pizza or something?
Pizza got here, yeah, because we couldn't --
After their lunchtime.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, when we, when I've done things like that for and for the staff, I've been able to get them to make sure the pizza's done in time. So it's just a matter of asking, I think I went to Village. So I don't know if you guys want to do that again, but they do have some, they have been really good at accommodating that in the past, when I've asked them to for certain things. So if you, that's, if that's something you still would like to do, there's a way around that, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to know if the times are --
Yeah.
And I did ask Ms. Tempurino to just give you a sense of where the school board is with supply money, because that may be something that you might want to access.
Okay. You have $146 left in supplies, but you have some other monies available within that line, and you'd like to spend more than that within school board purview.
So the other option is, we also did a sandwich thing for, like through the combat man, and that way, it's an ongoing thing, the pizza isn't getting cold, and they can make their sandwiches, and they can just allow the combat man to put together.
Like a deli tray?
Salad, deli tray kind of thing.
There was salads, deli trays, there was macaroni, cold macaroni salad. There was two or three different types of meats, a couple different types of cheeses, a couple different types of breads, plus they sent mustard and condiments and mayonnaise and that kind of stuff. And that way, the teachers, depending, no matter what their schedule is, were able to go in, not just the teacher, but all the staff, go in and make whatever they needed and pick and choose.
I think that's a great idea.
So you want to just do that?
Yeah.
Total contract to combat man?
Contract to combat man.
And then Shannon, what day makes the most sense, I guess, is the next question.
Whatever day. We, you know, we'll do whatever. Everyone has lunch every day.
Well, if you want to look at your schedule, make sure there isn't an activity going on that would take away from it, you know.
We can coordinate on that.
A day that's a little less busy.
Yeah.
Tough to find on a May.
Right, I know. Well, and the 11th is early release day. That might be kind of nice, maybe. That might be a really good day, just because that everyone can actually have a nice lunch together.
That's nice.
And not have to inhale. Inhale it, that might be a good use.
Is that a Thursday?
Yes, we'll make sure that we get that accomplished.
Awesome, thank you.
And act surprised.
Yes.
Don't tell anyone.
You don't watch Channel 3, right?
Next item is Business Superintendent, School Year Calendar Draft.
So you also have attached to that same handout that had the updates to the school board, the second page of that has an actual, a third update to our calendar. My apologies, the original one was a previous draft. What, in conversation with Shannon, the early release days, Shannon and the leadership team would like to have a chance to schedule those by the end of June, but would have four within the next school year. So with the board's willingness to allow them to add those at the end, you know, by the end of June, so it does go home, so parents are aware well in advance, but they are still in the process of kind of looking at when to time those, when it makes the most sense. And in terms of this draft, you'll notice the 27th of August is the first day of school, as well as December the 21st is a school day. I think the one that you were sent had those as days off. And this would, hopefully, if there were no snow days, the last day of school for students would be June 10. And I'm hopeful that we've got to be getting out of whatever stream we're in.
Snow this weekend.
Are there any questions relative to the calendar? That I can --
No.
Does that align with 48?
So it's pretty close to 48. The high school is starting later. They're starting after Labor Day because of the construction project. So it's pretty close to actually Plymouth Elementary, because 48, I mean, excuse me, because Plymouth Regional High School is trying to go a little later, their start time, because of this construction.
Okay.
They're just trying to buy as much summertime as they can.
And they're probably starting construction. Is everybody okay with this?
Do you know if they have the 21st off of December?
Do you know, I know we had looked at the furious calendars. Do you remember?
They do not have it off.
I don't believe they do.
Okay.
You know, the nice thing, I will say, you know, where we have been in a position of so many snow days, this is a nice type calendar, you know, that it really does allow for a lot of continuity, that in a number of other places, when you have a number of days here and there, they really do add up to a much longer June. This is, oh, this is Penny Baker.
They don't have the, there's a typo there, it should be 21. They do not have the 21st off.
They do not have the 21st off.
So they're going to school that day as well? Okay.
Yep. Sorry, it says the 22nd, but it's the 21st.
So taking the motion to approve the calendar as presented. Second? Nothing else? All in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Can I have a vendor of your calendar schedule for this year?
So the third sheet you have in that packet that was distributed, so we have had one tropical storm and six snow days this year. We do exceed the minimum standards by the, set by the state in terms of minimum hours. So we are actually proposing that the students will make up four of those days. So that would take them through, they were originally scheduled to get out the 11th of June, so we would have them finish that week, which would be the 15th, which would be a half which would be the fifteenth, which would be a half day. And then by the collective bargaining agreement, teachers have one day after students finish. And that would certainly be for those end of year responsibilities. The remaining three days, we would have two of them be professional learning, that Shannon would be working with the leadership team and so forth to arrange. And then the seventh day, you know, when you have this many days that quite frankly change your calendar, teachers need some more time to plan. So that would be really teacher self-directed time that people are obviously putting in to try to kind of strategize how you are going to close out the year. So that is what we are proposing to make up for those total seven days that were lost with various weather-related events.
So the teacher-directed, that would be the twenty-first or just on their own?
I would, that would certainly be before then. I put it as the last one, but it's actually, I would see it before the twelfth. You know, that's really time that teachers are, that additional time above and beyond what their typical planning is to try to, again, figure out how to close the year out and, you know, hone in on what's most important.
So the last day would be the twentieth?
Would be the twentieth for teachers.
Or is this water falling down and you didn't know there was another day?
You know, I thought about putting it above, and then I thought we're confusing that.
So this would put graduation on that Friday. Unless we want to do it the Friday before. If we were going to have the students be out on that Monday, it might make sense to do it the Friday before instead of having graduation on a Monday night, but I think the fifteenth is a good, Friday, the fifteenth is a good. That work, I think?
So graduation would be the fifteenth?
The fifteenth, yep.
That actually would work if you do it a half a day, it would allow you time to set up.
So if we do have another snow day, will this hold?
There are no more snow days.
How dare you say that?
We're chatting, right?
She's talking to the wrong person.
I think processes and stuff are starting to come up.
They'll survive.
So we need a motion to approve the new end of year calendar schedule.
One second.
Nothing else? All in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Tuition rates two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
In your packet is a memo regarding tuition rates for the current year, and it includes history from the last three years. Rates are calculated based on a formula for cost per pupil that uses data from the prior year and the DOE twenty-five, which is the end of year financial form submitted to the Department of Ed, and prior year average daily membership. It takes the total current expenditures of sixteen seventeen, less food service revenue, less transportation expenditures, and supplemental expenditures, which is tuition, equipment, summer school. Comes up with a new subtotal, divides that by the average daily membership to come up with the cost per pupil. Normally, we said it much earlier in the year. I'm not sure what happened, but it got overlooked. I do apologize for that.
So the proposal is seventeen four oh two seventy?
Correct.
Which is actually a reduction of almost fifteen hundred? Everybody okay with that number? We can set it at any number we want. We don't have to set it at that. Take a motion to approve that number of seventeen thousand four hundred and two dollars and seventy cents. Sandra? Second? Steve?
Just to share that, we have students who are in foster care in Ashland, but from another community. The tuition rate is used for us to bill that other community. So that is, you know, a piece just for the board to be aware of.
What happens if a student is only, say, three quarters into the year and they leave? Are these?
It's based on a per diem.
A per diem.
And if it is a special ed student whose costs exceed this tuition rate, they are billed either the tuition rate or their cost of services.
Actual cost of services.
Correct.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Thank you. General operating expenses. Attachment in your packet.
The manifest twenty thirteen for a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. I'm happy to answer any questions. I did have explanations included.
Any questions on the manifest? If not, I'll take a motion to approve. Steve? Second? Anything else? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Next item is policy, third and final reading. Need a motion to approve the third and final reading of the following policies. Policy one one six one, nondiscrimination policy statement. Policy five one four five, reporting of suspected child abuse and neglect. Policy five one four nine point two, hazing. Policy five one five two, wellness policy. Policy six one six two, animals in a school. Policy six one eight two, character and citizenship education. Steve?
I have some questions. At this late date. To sort of attest to the fact that I may or may not have read these words correctly.
Policy. We need a motion first.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, policy one one six one, nondiscrimination policy. There are two words that are hyphenated, and I'm not sure they need to be. And that's not a big deal. Doesn't change the meaning, but it's, in the first paragraph.
Participation.
State and local law ordinance be excluded from participation, and then down.
Discrimination.
Discrimination.
So fix those typos.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. And then next one is policy five one four nine point two. Has one question on that. It's the part that said, will be guilty of a Class B misdemeanor. It's, the policy can state guilt, someone's guilt? I'm not sure really what that's, I may be reading that out of context or something, but it's.
I think it may be, or.
Yeah.
I can see your concern there.
I mean, it's not up to us to pass. And it sort of denies due process.
Change your word will to may.
I think we might have to run that by legal. I don't know where that is coming from.
I don't know if it came off of these two codes.
That's what I'm wondering, too, if some language just got transposed and doing it in May. That's a good question.
We can certainly take that back and confirm where that originated from. And if we substituted a will for a may or.
We'll take that in a second. Did you have anything else on these policies?
One more.
Yep.
Actually, two more, sorry. It wasn't really a slow week. It just took the time to do it. On policy five one five two, second page, promotion of winter activities including but limited to.
Not.
Not.
The final one. Six one eight two. The karma missing in a secondary free society requires respect for persons, property, principles, karma, and for self. Now, I did teach science. I wasn't an English teacher, so I could be incorrect here.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Could you?
I said I may be incorrect here, but I'm thinking.
Could you repeat the part of her to that?
A free society requires respect for persons, comma, property, comma, principles, and for self. And I'm thinking the comma between principles and.
It's a Oxford comma. No, what comma is that?
Yeah, that. Not mandatory, but.
The comma was out of fashion, but it came back in.
There would be a comma there if I was.
But there was a period where it wasn't there.
Yeah. No, I would agree that that makes sense to put a comma there.
Five one four nine though is the one that we want to.
Send back.
So I'm going to ask Debbie if you'll take back your second. Steve, if you'll take back your motion.
Pardon?
Take back your motion.
Yes.
So the motion will be to approve one one six one, five one four five, five one five two, six one six two, and six one eight two. And then a motion to approve those. Debbie?
As amended.
As corrected. Typos. And then Sandra, second. So we are eliminating in the approval, we are not approving five one four nine point two at this point. All in favor? Five zero on that. I'll take a motion to. If this is the right word.
Approve even though we just defeated it. Right.
Right.
So everybody votes now.
Or we can take a motion to send it back to policy.
Yeah, either way.
Either way. So I'll take a motion either way.
To send back to policy.
Yeah.
Sandra?
I'll second it.
Renee? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero. So that one will go back to policy. Thank you, Steve. Policy second reading. Policy nine three six eight, meeting conduct. Renee? Is it second? Deb? Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Thank you. And then we got new policy, fresh readings, we'll do one at a time. Policy four one four six, Family and Medical Leave Act. Need a motion on this one? Renee? And Deb?
Did we want to send that one back?
Yeah, we're going to send it back, but we got to get a motion, so. So on this one here, we have been approached by the teachers. There's a couple of concerns that they'd like to have an opportunity to have a conversation about. So what I'd like to do is defeat this, and then we'll send it back to policy. If everybody's okay with that. So all in favor?
Not that I would ever tell you not to vote.
And then we'll go back. All opposed? Zero five. Thank you. So we'll go back to policy.
Thank you.
Policy five one three three, dress code.
One question on that.
Take a motion, Deb?
I'll second.
Renee? Steve?
Okay, my question is very, at the very beginning, Ashland School Board recognized that school dress significantly influences student behavior, and that appropriate dress and grooming contribute to a productive learning environment, as well as promotes individual dignity. It just sounded awkward to me, and I was proposing, Ashland School Board recognized that school dress significantly influences student behavior, period. And then new sentence, appropriate dress and grooming contribute to a productive learning environment and promotes individual dignity.
And it's actually promote.
Yeah.
Promotes.
Yep.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So a motion to approve, as amended. All in favor? Five zero. Thank you. First reading, policy six one four zero point one, objections to course materials. Take a motion to approve. Sandra? And the second is Deb? Anything on that motion, on that policy? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Policy six one eight one, distant education, online education, e-learning. Take a motion to approve. Deb? Second? Renee?
Sure. I'm telling her how to vote. Tell me the second thing.
That's why we work good together. Any questions or comments on that one?
One.
Yep. Don't be sorry.
Down in the new, the second paragraph where it deals additionally, any ELO must be aligned with the school's learning process. What it currently says, I would recommend, must be aligned with or must align with. One or the other. I don't know that matters which.
Which way do you want to go?
Muscle line.
Muscle line with, drop the B.
Anything else on that policy? If not, approve the policy as amended. All in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Policy six one eight three, health education and exemption from instruction. Take a motion to approve. Deb? Second? Sandra? Any questions or comments? Deb?
In the opt-out procedure informed section, the second paragraph, it says, parents, guardians who wish to have their child, excuse me, opt out of such instruction are required to complete the district opt-out form and state the particular blah blah blah. And I wondered if it should particularly reference the title of the form, which in this case, I believe would be the new form, health and sex education exemption. Because in the next paragraph, it specifically states, parents, guardians who do not want their child to participate in a particular unit of health or physical education for religious reasons must complete A. And then it has the proper title of the form. So it just clarifies and.
So after, it says the district, and then put in health and physical education, and then opt-out form? Just insert that title in between those two words?
Up in that.
Yep, between district and opt-out. We would insert health or physical education.
Yeah, it would actually be, I think, this one, the health and sex education exemption form.
I think we could cite six one eight three point one.
Well, it gives, you know, in the second paragraph, it says health or physical education.
But my understanding, as I read it, is it's two different forms.
Two different.
One is health and sex, and one is health and physical ed. So that's.
What we can do is maybe insert another form. So it could be six one eight three point two.
Especially with forms. You don't want to get lost in forms.
So six one three point two.
And I had one of their small. In the very last paragraph on that page, in accordance with the Federal Protection of Pupil Rights Statute, comma, and a school district that receives federal Department of Education funds. The superintendent, I wondered if the comma could be replaced by an because they both are. They have to work together.
So take out that comma.
Anything else on that policy? We'll be approving it as amended. All in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Policy six one eight three point one, health and sex education exemption opt-out form. Anything on that form? Anyone? Take a motion to approve. Second? Renee? Nothing else? All in favor? Steve? Five zero. Policy six one eight four. Policy 6184, non-educational surveys and questionnaires. Take a motion to approve that. Deb? Second? Renee?
Sorry.
Any questions or anything on 6184? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Policy, we have a policy to rescind. Policy 5129, independent evaluation for students with disabilities. Need a motion to rescind this policy as it's been merged with policy 6171. Steve?
I'll second.
Renee? Anything else on this one? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Privilege of the floor. Anything from the audience on any issue? You guys need anything? Sure? Announcements. April 5th, 2018. We have those meetings that we discussed earlier, meet and greet for the Director of Student Services. With just two candidates?
So, we have two candidates.
So, we're down to two candidates. Ashland Elementary School, room 119, and the conference room at 3:00 to 4:15. InterLakes Elementary School, library and art room from 5:30 to 6:45.